For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Christie, could you take roll call, please?
Sure. Necorato, here. Martin.
Here.
Cretelli.
Present.
Fontana. She's online. Pappenforth.
Present.
Stevens.
Here.
Mayor Shore.
Here.
Aquarum is present.
And that brings us to the consent agenda. Any questions or comments on that this evening?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to combine and approve the consent agenda with an amendment to item number one. And that is involving approving the agenda. So if you look at number 15, Ordinance 2024, we want to make that be conforming amendments to the City of Salida Municipal Code and any other typos that need to be corrected in that.
Second. Okay, so we have a motion from Councilmember Pappenforth, seconded by Councilmember Cretelli, and the motion is to combine and approve the consent agenda with an amendment to item one, to have it conform so that it says City of Salida rather than, I believe it's
Fort Morgan.
Fort Morgan and any other typos.
Correct.
Okay. Further discussion?
Stevens.
Yes.
Cretelli.
Yes.
Necorato.
Yes.
Fontana. I wonder, oh, you know what? Pappenforth?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Great. And that brings us to citizen comment. And this is an opportunity for the council to hear from our community. Public will be limited to three minutes each during citizen comments. Council may not respond to your comment this evening, rather they may take your comments and suggestions under advisement. And your questions will be directed to the appropriate department for follow-up. And if necessary, the city administrator will correct the public record. And first up, we have Daniel Distel.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Daniel Distel, and I'm the Salida Professional Firefighters Union President, Local 3579. And I have some brief comments on the agenda item tonight regarding the IGA between the City of Salida and the South Ark Fire District. First off, I would be remiss if I didn't show some gratitude. I know that this IGA has taken a lot of time with both the district, Chief Johnkey, members of the council and the city, and I just want to show our gratitude for that. We really do appreciate. The firefighter union was formed over 100 years ago for really one reason: safety. Safety of the community and safety of the firefighters. The Salida Professional Firefighters support this IGA because we believe that it provides that public safety and firefighter safety. For firefighters in our world, training equals safety, for us and for the community. The dedication towards a training facility and necessary equipment, we know how expensive this is, and this provides the funds for it. The IGA also provides contributions towards wages and a step plan. These contributions start to bridge the gap between Salida and our competing fire departments. Fire departments across the state continue to hire, and they continue to offer higher incentives and higher benefits to try to recruit trained firefighters around the state. No matter which direction you go, they're hiring and they're paying a lot. And this bridges the gap, and it starts so we can retain the highly trained firefighters we have. As you know, we lost two firefighters in the last few months to other departments. And they both said the same thing: better wages, better benefits. This also helps us recruit new firefighters, because once again, we're in competition with those cities and those departments that they're throwing money at firefighters because their cities are growing also. And this helps us compete. Furthermore, the local union fully supports our Chief Johnkey. We believe he has gone above and beyond in assisting with the creation of this IGA through the negotiation process with our district. He has our full support and our gratitude for that. So I'll leave you with this. The union supports this IGA, the firefighters on the ground support this IGA, the district supports the IGA, Chief Johnkey supports the IGA, and I'm asking for this council's support. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Kent Maxwell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Kent Maxwell, Fire and Forestry Coordinator for Colorado Fire Camp. We're the nonprofit Wildland Firefighter School in Maysville. And not a, no, no, it's exactly an agenda item. It is in the packet for the department report for this Salida Fire Department on the grant funding that Colorado Fire Camp has received that has allowed us to have a National Civilian Community Corps crew, a nine-person chainsaw crew that will be coming to Salida, will be living in the upstairs of the old fire station as the new fire station is opened up, and will be assisting the city with the work on the property, the Salida Water Galleries, doing some cleanup on the dead and down material, as well as the, so the 87 acres that the city has at the water galleries south of Highway 50, as well as close to 190 acres out in Pontius Springs on Hot Springs Road. And so our goal is to assist with about 40 acres of cleanup between our, the AmeriCorps crew from NCCC, as well as the Fire Camp classes. Just wanted to express the gratitude for the support from the City of Salida, as we've had about a couple million dollars in grant funding in the last several years through state, county, federal support, and we appreciate the support from the city. And that we also will have two other crews that will be staying at the upstairs of the Victoria Tavern. We have the workforce housing going in the upstairs of the VIC, and we'll have two winter crews starting in January as well. So just wanted to express my gratitude to the city, the support from Fire Chief Johnkey, and I just appreciate the opportunity. So thank you.
Thank you. And next up, Doug Mendelson.
I'm gonna have to bring it down. Good evening, council. I actually have three subjects, two very brief, and one that'll take up the rest of the time. I know that there have been increasing number of complaints about heavy equipment and trucks driving through town. Well, you know, I believe that you may have the ability, any project that's within the city limits, you can make them submit a traffic control plan, and you have to approve that plan. And you can not approve any plan on Highway 291 and have them find an alternate route through town. That's something you can look into. Secondly, I was gonna come a few weeks ago to council because after the 6A went down, I wrote a letter to the editor with a solution to the plan. Thought I was the one that came up with it, but I was quickly told I was not, and it was brought to your attention. So I just wanted to throw my support behind this caste group. There's 28 mountain towns already, and I know we're having a little problem because we're not the right type of government at the moment, but I guess that's something we need to look into, or you will look into again, so that we can do that. And actually, if all the vacant houses were charged $5,000, which cities like Vancouver, Oakland, San Francisco, Lake Tahoe's working on it, and DC already have those in place, so it's not like we'd be the first. That would be nice. My third and most important one tonight is about Chafee Housing Authority. I think you may know that I've written several articles questioning their, everything about that group. Up until noon today, they still had the report that they had put in, the draft report from October 14th. I went on right before I came here, and now it's blocked, and they denied me access to look at their newest report, which I think is going to be approved in two days in Buena Vista. I just want to point out a few things. I have asked them on several occasions, the last CEO and this CEO, they need to show you and Chafee County and Buena Vista spreadsheets of how they spent their money. They've been in business for five years, they haven't built one unit yet. Now she wants a raise to $125,000. I looked it up on HUD site and on several zip recruiter sites, $82,000 is the average, not 145. So I don't know where they got their information. It also looks like they may be putting Jane's place on the back burner to buy 505. I'm not sure. But all I'm asking is for you folks to please scrutinize them and make them show you their spreadsheet for the last five years. Because right now, they're asking for $800,000 a year for them, for overhead and salaries. And where is the money coming from now? And where has the money gone? I think since you're supposedly giving them money, you need to ask those questions and have them give them to you. They refuse to give them to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone online this evening?
We do. We have Adam, and I'm gonna unmute him now.
Can you guys hear me all right?
Yeah, Adam, we hear you loud and clear. Why don't you go ahead?
Okay, okay. I have about, I have about three, three things. The first thing is, I want to respond to the first gentleman. I don't think that Chief Yarkey and his fire crew should deserve any money or deserve any raises, because we are struggling in this town to, in essence, stay above water. Secondly, the mayor, in essence, mistook my comments. He said he didn't understand them. What, what, what I was referring to, what was the fact that Christie Dunes is acting like a city manager, she's not acting as a city administrator when, in essence, she signed off on the, on the police station and when she, she, in essence, did the same thing with the fire, fire station, and she is not living up to her scope of work. And I think that, in essence, she, she is, in essence, going around you guys for everything and not letting you, in essence, be informed of what's going on in this town. And when I've spoken to most of the citizens, it doesn't say that she's been supported by this council. Well, that's fine, but I've spoken to people out in the community, and they do, in essence, do not like her or don't care for her, for her, for her work, and they would like to see somebody else in that position. And I, and I think that, in essence, it's been too, too much on this town, and, and she has also created, created a fight with Pontius Springs because of their, of their water, in essence. And other municipalities are laughing, laughing at us because, because we have somebody who supports the city administrator and defends her at all costs. And I just think that's hypothetically completely wrong. And, and, and then the last, and then the last point, point that I'm, I'm gonna make is on the stoplights by the hospital and by Pontia Boulevard. I would like to see some stoplights there because, because that is dangerous. And I would like to wish everybody a happy holidays and a Merry Christmas. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Do we have anyone else online? Okay.
Nope.
Well, that will take us to unfinished business, and we do have a public hearing, an amplified sound permit for the New Year's Day 5K run. And I'll go ahead and open the hearing and turn it over to staff to summarize their report.
Sure. So the Recreation Department is hosting the New Year's Day 5K run. Submitted an amplified sound permit for council's consideration. The 5K run will be held at the golf course on January 1st between the hours of 9:00 a.m. and 11:00 a.m. Public notice was posted at the golf course on December 6th, and staff is recommending approval of the amplified sound permit.
As long as I don't have to run, I'm good. Okay. Great, thank you. Any questions for staff? No? Okay. Staff and the applicant are the same person, so do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
I don't, I didn't see anybody down there. I don't think there is.
Looks empty from here.
Bill, would you like to make a public comment? No? Okay. Very good. So no public comment. No need for rebuttal. I'm gonna go ahead and close public hearing, and that'll take us to preliminary council discussion. Who'd like to begin?
I would offer a motion. A move to approve an amplified sound permit for the New Year's Day 5K run to be held on January 1, 2025, between the hours of 9:00 a.m. and 11:00 a.m.
Second.
So we have a motion from Councilmember Pappenforth, seconded by Councilmember Martin, and the motion is to approve an amplified sound permit for the New Year's Day 5K run to be held on January 1, 2025, between the hours of 9:00 a.m. and 11:00 a.m. Further discussion?
Fontana.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Necorato.
Yes.
Stevens.
Yes.
Pappenforth.
Yes.
Cretelli.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Was that supposed to say PM?
No, AM. It's in the morning.
Because it's for the 5K run?
Yeah.
I'm thinking of the heart drop. Thank you.
If I was in it, I mean, PM would be better.
Okay, moving right along to new business. Appointing a member of the city council or another designated, designated representative to the Chafee Recreation Council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had a representative of the Chafee Recreation Council reach out to the mayor and I, asking if the city council would be interested in officially appointing a designee to that council. Currently, Diesel Post, our Parks and Recreation Director, attends those meetings and has for about the last four years. So he has been engaged in the conversations that have been really countywide, trying, you know, ensuring that we're incorporating the city's plans into what the county's doing. And so he has been attending those meetings and is happy to continue attending those meetings. However, if there's someone from the city council who is interested, we obviously wanted to bring this to you so that you could make the official decision. Diesel, if you want to share what the...
Yeah, I think by default, I've been attending these meetings since my first day. I actually attended them in my previous career as a principal at Chafee County High School, and just kind of continued. Our relevance, I see my role in that, in that, on that council as to just kind of speak in the best interest of the municipality. Much of what we talk about, I would almost push up to 90% of what we talk about, does not really concern us. It's a lot of high country, ranch land protection, boreal toad habitat stuff. But every once in a while, we get into a conversation about community concentration zones, which is what we're, we call Pontia, BV, Johnson Village, and Salida. So I'm, I'm more than willing, I've been doing it for years. I probably, without direction from you guys, I am probably a 75% participant. I probably miss about a quarter of them because of one thing or another. Sometimes they're up to three hours long. And I'm looking at Dominique because she's been in quite a few of them. But I, with your direction, I'd step it back up and be there with bells on, speaking in our best interests.
Talk about the meetings, the frequency of the meetings and that kind of thing.
Well, there's, there are two different groups. There's a Recreation Council and a Rec Advisory Board. And so I'm on both, and one is a very large group, and the other is a smaller contingent of kind of more critical stakeholders. We meet probably between the two once a month. And we get updates from the BLM and the Forest Service. We get updates from HRA, SPOT, SMT. We bring some updates. I'll speak to some of the stuff that we're doing. A lot of it, it is, I don't know how, the nitty gritty and the ballot language, it's related to the Invision, Chafee County, and the Common Ground Fund. So the Common Ground Fund was, is a fund that we all voted for at the county level for funds to mitigate recreational impact. And so there's a sum of money that is doled out in grants to organizations to try to help mitigate recreational impact. And it's turning into a pretty healthy fund at this point with quite a bit of money. And recreational impact, you know, we, we spend a lot of time trying to brainstorm ideas on how we can mitigate recreation impact without building things or like building new recreational facilities. And I preach this all the time in this group, that, that we're gonna get to a point where just putting up porta potties is not gonna spend $2 million. And that maybe we need to start talking about ways that we can reallocate funds or something along those lines to start looking at maybe recreation operations or improvement or something along those lines. That's really the angle I've been going, and to be honest, that is the group that got me the audience with Trust for Public Lands. That I then took to the commissioners, and the commissioners wrote a letter of support so Trust for Public Lands can come into the community and just kind of do research as to what recreational amenities, improvements the community wants to see, and then how they would be willing to pay for them. So we've gotten, it's been a long game, but we've definitely, it is a, it is a worthwhile endeavor. And yeah, I unfortunately put that in my priorities. It's probably like number three. I sometimes call it my second job, because sometimes it's, it's a lot. But it, it, it is very valuable to hear and speak to every player in the county about what's going on recreationally. Our trails pass through all of these jurisdictions, so.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I just had one quick comment. It was a few years ago, I was on the Transportation Board and not adding much of any value. And then Bill started going, David was involved, and all of a sudden, as, as the city, we really upped our game. So having someone like you with your background and experience makes so much more sense to me than having one of us there. so much more sense to me than having one of us there.
I would disagree that, um, having sat in those meetings, it's, um, Diesel does an excellent job of representing the city and, um, it makes sense to have you be there. Um, that being said, I'd love to see an agenda from time to time.
Okay.
I don't know how, you know, I'm signed up for Invision, so I don't know how I would get signed up to see an agenda, but just personal interest in boreal toad habitat, really. Um, but it wouldn't be to represent the city, but just sit in and listen. Because I think you do an excellent job. And, and leveraging that community concentration zone for focused recreation in the Valley Bottom is a, um, is a great way for us, the city, to capitalize on some recreational opportunities too.
Okay.
You know, maybe one of us would be happy to go with you occasionally, but it sounds like we really want you to do it.
Yeah, and they're all online. Um, and sometimes having 30 to 40 people online is hard.
That is hard.
And so, um, I'm hoping that we start getting in person a little bit, twice a year. And I think at that point, it might be great to have representation from you guys. Um, sitting online, it's very easy to get lost. I think that's why it falls along my priority.
I do have an idea about the trails. There's no way to make it work though. I see those self-cleaning cat boxes and I'd like to see a self-cleaning trail because you have to spend most of your time watching where your feet are. If you want your shoes clean when you go.
Technology is to the place where it can, we can fly drones over all our parks and all our trails and pick up dog poo and dog poo bags and trash and litter. We, unfortunately, we just don't have the funds.
We'll do a council.
Great. Thanks.
And I would include in my...
We were trying to save ourselves times here by having.
Yeah. I was being a little facetious.
So was I.
Anything else? I'll gladly entertain a motion if there's nothing else.
Mr. Mayor, I move to appoint Diesel Post to the Chaffee Recreation Council.
Second.
So we have a motion from Councilmember Nakarato, uh, seconded by Councilmember Martin, and the motion is to appoint Diesel Post to the Chaffee Recreation Council. Further discussion?
Nakarato?
Yes.
Pappenfort?
Affirmative.
Stevens?
Yes.
Fontana?
Yes.
Cretelli?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, and next up is, thank you. Appreciate it. Next up is Resolution 2024-74, a resolution of the City Council, the City of Salida, Colorado, adopting and approving the 2025 fee schedules.
Thank you. I'm going to start off and then I think, um, each department's going to kind of explain their fees. Um, so Resolution 2024-74 is for the approval of the 2025 fee schedules. Department heads have submitted their fee schedule to me and that's all attached to, in the packet. Um, with the exception of Arts and Culture and Parks and Rec, they will be bringing their fee schedules to you probably February, probably second meeting in February. Um, some departments had changes to their fees to reflect increasing costs of providing services. The changes to the clerk's fee schedule, we updated the initial um, fee for fire inspections, which currently they're $50 for the initial for a liquor license. That's going up to $75. And then we added a fee for amplified sound permits that require public hearings. Because that does take quite a bit of staff's time. So that was the update to the clerk's fee schedule. And then I think everybody else is going to come and just kind of give an overview of their fee schedules.
Okay.
Should we go in order?
Maybe, uh... Let me see.
The Salida Police, Chief Johnson. We can go in order of how they are in the packet.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, the police department, all of our fines are set. Um, we went through a study three years ago and changed our entire fine structure and we're requesting to leave that the same.
Thank you.
Questions?
Questions?
No questions. Fire.
Mr. Mayor, council members, uh, the fire department, we did an analysis of our fees and we thought it was time that we upped the fees a little bit for cost recovery, uh, because of operational demands, we're having higher car volume. Uh, really it came down to consistency in the industry. Uh, our fees are much lower than most every other fire departments. We wanted to bring that up, especially considering that our budget has been very, very flat. Uh, also increasing fees encourages compliance to fire code. Uh, inflation and higher rising costs is another reason we, we wanted to raise the fees and alignment with regional standards.
Any, any questions? I think, okay, thank you.
I know. Yeah, okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, for Public Works, generally speaking, most of the fees stayed where they're at. There is, uh, four different items that we did, um, change things a bit in. On that first page there, it had to do with, uh, direct costs related to water meters as well. Oh, actually on that, I guess jump back a page. Um, this is the EV charging. If you recall, in 2023, the city, actually it's 20, the start of 2024, the cities, uh, started charging for, um, plugging in at the city-owned EV charge stations and, um, no changes were proposed there. Next one, operationally, just kind of some minor items as far as direct costs have gone up and also, uh, deposits which are required when someone were to cut a street, just to make sure the work does get completed. And, um, this one, I, I don't know if council's, a lot of you may not be aware, but our sewer plan actually brings in several thousand revenue each month by doing lab work uh, for a lot of the other water and sewer, um, districts in the county such as like, um, Monarch, Cuddy's down in Fremont County, places like that. So they do a lot of lab work. So those are just why, um, that's why we have those fees posted. And then, see, I think, Amy, will you be talking about the water and sewer?
Sure.
Okay. Um, I, I'll just note, like, the water and sewer fees, which is further down in here, um, they are updated based on a utility rate study that was done approximately four years ago. And so the increases there are consistent with that rate study and with what has been implemented the last three to four years. So.
Any questions? Okay, thanks.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Um, similarly, we have, uh, limited changes in this year's fee schedule, the most notable being that for uh, open space fees in lieu to accurately reflect, um, the, the cost burden for providing open space when it is purchased. Um, a slight increase in annexation, uh, application costs to more accurately reflect the amount of work that goes into, uh, those particular application processes, um, as well as tree deposits, um, because we want to just make sure in that uh, case that folks do have an incentive to actually put in the, the trees in landscaping that they are required. Um, there might be one or two very minimal, uh, other increases there, but most of that we did last year.
Any questions? Thank you.
This, this is in line with what David already addressed. These are our monthly service charges for water and wastewater. Just a reminder, this is an enterprise fund. These are enterprise funds. They are designed to operate as a business. We do not provide tax revenues to support them. They have to collect enough fees. So we periodically do a rate study, um, with the assistance of a financial expert that specializes in this area, looking forward at what all the costs are down the road, what rates we need to charge in order to be able to afford maintenance of those important, um, systems. And we are currently increasing, according to a 2020 rate study, um, 2.6% per month for the service charge for, um, water and 8.9% for sewer, which, you know, on the lower end of the scale, accounts for about an 84 cents per month increase for water and a $2 increase for sewer.
Thanks. Any questions on that? Thank you.
And that is it.
That takes us to council discussion or a motion or whatever people feel inclined to do.
We're trying to find the motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Resolution 2024-74, a resolution of the City Council for the City of Salida, Colorado, adopting and approving the 2025 fee schedules.
Second, and these fee schedules look so much better than they did last year. Thank you, staff.
Thank you, thank you. So we have a motion from Councilmember Cretelli, uh, seconded and complimented by Councilmember Pappenfort, and the motion is to approve Resolution 2024-74, a resolution of the City Council for the City of Salida, Colorado, adopting and approving the 2025 fee schedules. Further discussion?
Stevens?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Cretelli?
Yes.
Nakarato?
Yes.
Fontana?
Yes.
Pappenfort?
Yes.
Motion passed.
And next up is Resolution 2024-75, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Salida, Colorado, approving an updated intergovernmental agreement between the City of Salida and the South Arkansas Fire Protection District for fire services. And I guess that's why I see so many firefighters in the room. Welcome, everybody.
Mr. Mayor, Council, uh, tonight we're going to ask your support on, uh, 2475. First, I wanted to talk about the longstanding relationship we have with the South Arkansas Fire Protection District. Uh, we actually, as a fire department, formed in 1880 and they formed in 1953. Uh, since 2004, we've been working together under a intergovernmental agreement. Um, and the relationship's been very beneficial on both sides. It's been very important to our community's safety. Uh, we provide an all-hazard response and in return, the South Arkansas Fire Protection District is able to provide us with wildfire equipment and wildfire team to tackle one of the largest threats we have in our community. Um, this, uh, agreement does provide financial improvements to the city. It's a renegotiated amount from the amount of $80,000 a year to $250,000 a year. This is an increase over the previous year. Uh, it's going to add some additional funding to the general fund. There is a, a piece of it that will add $150,000 towards a burn building, should we build one. Uh, $15,000 towards new fitness equipment at the new firehouse and up to $30,000 annually, should we decide to, uh, fund the Apparatus Reserve Fund to assist with the purchase of structural apparatus, which are very, very expensive. Uh, additionally, what this agreement does is it provides improvements in a lot of areas in the fire department. Number one being our medical area. We're going to have a, a medical trainer from within our staff that's going to ensure that our certificates are up to date and our education and tracking is up to modern standards. Uh, we're also going to move our Swift Water program inside and we're going to train all our, all our folks to be Swift Water certified. They already are, but we have to annually redo this. So as opposed to paying someone else to do it, we'll pay one of our own members to do it. And it'll also help us to create county-wide, uh, exercises, training exercises to improve our, our river rescue capabilities. Additionally, we're going to put the rank of engineer into the firehouse and that's the, the, the folks that drive the apparatus. Uh, in the past, there hasn't been a big push to have this person certified. Uh, it's a liability issue for the city and also, uh, a good service issue for the city as these guys will better understand the operation of the pumper and be able to do it in a more professional manner. Um, somebody touched on this earlier. Currently, we have turnover. Uh, people don't think we do, but we have 16% turnover. And every one of the retirement letters that we got over the past year says it was because of wages and benefits that we're missing. Um, we really have to do something and I think this IGA goes a long way to tackle that before we train people and then lose them to other fire departments, because that's just a money loss to the city. Um, so it's going to be good. Uh, the employee benefits, we're going to give them a step pay plan that's similar to the police department. They're not paid as much as the police department, but it's similar to the police departments. Um, and there were some, some comments about this and really it allows the city control of what that, that's going to be. It gives these folks a plan forward and something to look forward to and something to count on as they go forward. But the city still has ultimate control over the funds that are spent there. Uh, the community impact, the contribution's important. Uh, it serves a critical role in, uh, protecting Salida and the surrounding area, which are interconnected. We are really truly one community. Uh, and it helps us address some issues that were identified in the county, county emergency preparedness assessment. They identified wildfires are our number one threat to our county. So this really does help us to address that type of thing. Um, this is an updated IGA. It hasn't been touched since 2004. Uh, and it strengthens the partnership between the City of Salida and the South Arkansas Fire Protection District, uh, without burdening the, the general funds, but the, the city's general fund. Uh, adopting Resolution 2475 ensures that we can continue to work together to protect our residents, our property and our natural resources. So we would appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, questions?
Um, I just wanted to make a comment about the workforce housing that, you know, it's been discussed and hearing that Kent, it's going to happen and I appreciate too that you have it open for future possibilities. Let's say it's not working anymore for workforce housing. It leaves it open and I, I think that's great. And I appreciate that. And thank you for your hard work on this too.
And, and I just wanted to say, um, I really appreciate all the work that you did, uh, all the people in City Hall, as well as the fact that, uh, the South Ark District, I mean, all their, their board came to the table and I just, it's a great example of working together to get a better outcome. So thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Anyone else?
Well, I guess I'll be the stick in the mud to the comment made about workforce housing, um, because certainly have taken the stance that I don't think it's wise, um, based on the hours of conversation that we had based around the old fire department to begin with, which was, it was the entire foundation of the discussion moving forward to, and the decision to have a new facility built. Um, because it was no secret, I mean, um, that the department would have rather stayed in downtown. It's closer to everything. It's just a more convenient location. But it was just, it came down to, um, and we've heard the, uh, the term for hours not too long ago, deferred maintenance. It was too expensive to bring that building up to a place that, um, that was safe in the eyes of the code, that, um, that wasn't, uh, um, you know, away from the terminology used to describe as, you know, becoming dilapidated and a safety hazard. And then we, we proceeded from that part of the discussion to say, we are going to put our full support into a new facility that would be everything that we would need. So places for our, our firefighters to rest their head, which I believe we have plenty of bunk space in there. Um, but also plenty of room to store our apparatus. I mean, it, that was the entire point of the discussion was that we would have, this would be the everything that we needed. So to have written in no uncertain terms that we're on the fence about, um, keeping the old facility, it's just confusing. I don't, I don't think it wise. I think that, um, certainly also a term or a, a, a statement that I hear often, um, from city staff and from this own council is that government doesn't make good, for good landlords. It's not our job. It's not our lane. Um, I don't think that it makes sense also to have this, uh, this asset that we could potentially sell to, to put against the debt servicing. I mean, I just need help wrapping my head around why this is a good idea, I guess. And if anybody wants to pitch that to me, that'd be awesome.
Why is everybody looking at me to pitch it?
Yeah, yeah, that would be great.
I'm not going to pitch anything to you.
Okay.
All, all, I will say is...
Just tell me that I'm wrong so that I can like, just feel better about being wrong and that'd be great.
Well, I, I don't think you're wrong. Um, and although I wasn't here during the initial conversations, I would say that although the facility, the current facility is 124 years old and has served us well and does have some maintenance issues, it was also not serving the current fire department. not serving the current fire department due to the inability to store all the needed equipment there. It just doesn't function well as a modern fire department. That aside, I don't, I wasn't here when you had the conversations. It is no secret that that building does need something, and if this council and this body does not want to put the money into it, I totally understand that, and I know that the conversations were that the building could be sold in order to make a payment, perhaps, on the new fire station. With that being said, there is some, it is very convoluted over there. South Ark Fire Protection District owns the building with the bays in it. The City of Salida owns that just to the south. It's the two-story with the small garage where the kistle is. They are literally connected with wires, and like, all of the utilities are connected. So we can still do it. We absolutely can still do it. The agreement that Chief Johnkey has right now with Fire Camp is January through April. It's a very, very limited amount of time. The IGA specifically calls out the City Council as the decision-makers in how that building will be used. So it would be our intention that, once that Fire Camp is done, that the City Council will absolutely make that decision.
Okay.
So I don't think you're wrong.
Okay.
I think that there, we can, we can both be right.
Okay. I hate it when I'm right.
Is that fair?
Yeah, yeah, that's fair.
Do you have other questions?
That's fair.
Okay.
I'll just add, I understand you're, I'm not saying you're wrong either. I think we should keep an eye on the building. I mean, the longer that we hold on to it, the more it's going to be worth eventually. So it seems like a useful, it's a utilitarian way to use it now, and I think expanding the potential that Kent Maxwell mentioned as far as the housing those crews for those mitigation efforts, that is a huge opportunity in the face of that emergency, because there's like endless amounts of mitigation that could be done. So to use that building now for that opportunity makes a lot of sense to me. But I think we, I think we should revisit it often.
We will definitely have more conversations on that, on this, as we move forward.
I feel a little bit more warm and cuddly, thank you.
You're welcome.
Not to say, you know, everything else on this, yes, we need to remain competitive. This is an amazing document, and it's important, and it's something that keeps me up at night, is how do we keep our first responders here, and how do we remain competitive in this? Address all of that. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I would just say thanks to Chief Johnkey, too, and thanks to all our firefighters for your service as well.
Yeah, thank you, Chief.
When was your, when was your start date again?
March 4th.
So you've been a busy, you've been very busy. Thank you.
I work hard.
Yeah, thank you. Okay. No more questions. That takes us to council discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Resolution 2024-75, approving an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Salida and the South Arkansas Fire Protection District.
Second.
So we have a motion from Councilmember Cretelli, seconded by Councilmember Pappenforth. The motion is to approve Resolution 2024-75, approving an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Salida and the South Arkansas Fire Protection District. Further discussion?
Cretelli?
Yes.
Fontana?
Yes.
Pappenforth?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Nakorato?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Great. And that takes us, congratulations, everybody. That takes us to Resolution 2024-76, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Salida, Colorado, amending the policies regarding access to public records.
Thank you. So Resolution 2024-76 is amending the CORA policies. It's currently, last time it was amended, updated, was in 2019, and we had two policies. We had an internal and an external policy. Got rid of the internal policy, because our department heads are pretty good about getting back to me, getting information to me for the CORA requests. So we updated the external one. And one of the biggest things with that is with the new CORA software, I'm getting it, working on it now. Hopefully, the first week of January, it'll go live. People will be required to submit their requests through that online portal. With that, staff has recommended, council approved Resolution 2024-76, amending the open records policies. And I'll answer any questions if you have them.
Questions for our clerk?
Yeah. Just a quick point of clarification. So if it's online, would that kind of quell the outcome of, like, multiple CORA requests for the same thing? Does that, like, create an online database, then?
Yes.
So that's a time saver?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it's gonna, it's gonna help a lot.
Great.
Yeah.
Awesome. That's great news.
My understanding is, this has been so time-consuming for your department. So anything that can streamline, make it more efficient, I'm all in.
It's going to be great.
Nice. Other questions?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Resolution 2024-76, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Salida, Colorado, amending the policies regarding access to public records.
Second.
So we have a motion from Councilmember Pappenforth, seconded by Councilmember Stevens. The motion is to approve Resolution 2024-76, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Salida, Colorado, amending the policies regarding access to public records. Further discussion?
Pappenforth?
Yes.
Cretelli?
Yes.
Nakorato?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Fontana?
Yes.
Motion passed.
And next up, Resolution 2024-77, a resolution approving a revised first amended and restated intergovernmental agreement with Chaffee County concerning the operation and maintenance of the Salida Airport, Harriet Alexander Field, and repealing Resolution Number 30, Series 2001.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since 1969, the City of Salida and Chaffee County have jointly operated and maintained Harriet Alexander Field, now called Salida Airport, Harriet Alexander Field. We have been operating through intergovernmental agreements. The last one was updated and adopted in 2001. There have been a number of administrative and operational changes that have taken place in the last 23 years, and so this is an opportunity for us to update some of what is actually happening on the ground. It's funny how IGAs can be adopted and then get a couple people after the fact, and we just kind of do what works for us, which is great, but this allows us to say what we're doing. So a few of the items in here are pretty administrative, you know, when the county is going to be invoicing us for our contribution. We currently go through a capital improvement plan and budgeting process with the airport manager. So we ensure that we know what is happening through, you know, on the airport's long-term capital plan. So a lot of that invoicing is kind of a technical part of it. We, let's see, moved the requirement for the airport manager to be a county employee. One thing that the council, I want to make sure that you all are aware of, we currently, the City Council currently approves all hangar leases in the consent agenda. It goes through a process of, first, the airport board approves it, and then usually the commissioners approve it, and then it gets to City Council, and you all have an opportunity to approve or deny a hangar. I've never seen you deny a hangar, and in order to expedite the process, we did remove those hangar approvals coming to City Council for your consideration.
My favorite part of the job.
I know, and I don't want to take that away from you, which is why I'm pointing it out here.
Come to county meetings.
We did include in here having biannual updates from the airport manager, so that they can give us an update on what, how many hangers are being rented, what the waitlist looks like, who owns what right now. So want to point that out to you as well. The current IGA does compensate board members $25 per meeting. I don't think they were ever being compensated, so I know, I know. So we did remove that.
I need my back pay.
One item that is in the current IGA states that the airport will be operated as an enterprise. So like our water and wastewater, it will take in enough money to sustain itself. That is not feasible here, so we did remove that from the IGA, so that we wouldn't be getting ourselves into trouble. So happy to answer any questions. I've worked on this IGA with Don Reimer, the county manager, for a good part of this year, but happy to answer all the questions.
Questions for Christie.
Just to clarify, it moves the requirement for the airport manager to be a county employee, so then...
From one section of the IGA to another, it...
Literally physically.
It literally moved it into a different section.
Got it, got it.
They've always been an employee of the county. We don't have any, yeah.
Do a move?
Yeah, that'd be great.
I move to approve Resolution 2024-77, a resolution approving a revised first amended and restated intergovernmental agreement with Chaffee County concerning the operation and maintenance of the Salida Airport, Harriet Alexander Field, and repealing Resolution Number 30, Series 2001.
Second. Got your second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
She was sorry.
Okay, very good, okay. So we have a motion from Councilmember Stevens, seconded by Councilmember Martin. The motion is to approve Resolution 2024-77, a resolution approving a revised first amended and restated intergovernmental agreement with Chaffee County concerning the operation and maintenance of the Salida Airport, Harriet Alexander Field, and repealing Resolution Number 30, Series 2001. Further discussion?
Fontana?
Yes.
Nakorato?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Cretelli?
Yes.
Pappenforth?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, and that brings us to Resolution 2024-78, a resolution of the City Council for the City of Salida, Colorado, approving a boundary line adjustment for properties identified as, I think it's she-man, is that right? Okay. And SSG properties in the city slash county property.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It has been a very exciting few months as we clean up some of these agreements that have, we have all been working on for a very long time.
Let me just say, I appreciate all the cleanup that you've been busy doing.
It's been very exciting. This one's from 2018, so...
I remember this.
So in 2018, the City Council approved an exchange of property between the City of Salida and Chaffee County, jointly owned property, and SSG Holdings. So it was via ordinance 2018-09. This exchange was to help clean up some gaps in property that is located south of town, off of County Road 108, Hard Rock, SSG Holdings, some gravel pit operations by the county as well, if you're familiar. So southeast, southwest, excuse me, of the South Ark neighborhood, just to orient you. So this, this resolution will clean up some boundary lines that have gaps in property. So following a fence line, it's, it's pretty much just a statutory obligation for us to clean up these, these boundary lines. So you have a boundary line agreement that you'll be considering for approval this evening. We will also be updating the plat to show the city and county-owned property and the exchange that we had with the SSG property. Once we have that plat finalized, we will bring it forward and let you know about that as well. The city is working with the county on two kind of outstanding issues that we would like to see before that plat is finalized. One is the siding of a future water tank in that area, because it, we need to have a water tank that is at the same elevation as the tank that we have, to have the correct water pressure throughout the city. And the other are some drainage and utility easements that we will, that we want to see up there as well, given the drainage issues that we see on that property, and how they could affect the South Ark neighborhood. So you'll, you'll see that as well, coming forward. Happy to answer any questions you may have on this.
Anyone have questions this evening for Christie? Appreciate you doing the cleanup, ma'am.
That's good.
I move to approve Resolution 2024-78, a resolution of the City Council for the City of Salida, Colorado, approving a boundary line adjustment for properties identified as a she-man and SSG properties in the city slash county property.
Second. So we have a motion from Councilmember Martin, seconded by Councilmember Cretelli. The motion is to approve Resolution 2024-78, a resolution of the City Council for the City of Salida, Colorado, approving a boundary line adjustment for properties identified as a she-man and SSG properties in the city slash county property. Further discussion?
Nakorato?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Pappenforth?
Yes.
Fontana?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Cretelli?
Yes.
The motion passed.
Okay, and then up next is ordinance 2024-20, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Salida, Colorado, approving a loan from the Colorado Water Resources and Power Development Authority, CWRPDA, in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed $163,403.76, authorizing the form and execution of the loan agreement in governmental agency bond to evidence such loan, authorizing the construction of a project, prescribing other details in connection therewith, and declaring an emergency on second and final reading. This is a first reading and setting the second reading in public hearing for January 21st, 2025. Thanks, David.
Good evening, again. This is a pretty routine ordinance, just to be able to receive the funding through the state agency. They provide direct loans for construction. This is actually a principal forgiveness loan for engineering components related to the construction. The works, the engineering work is generally, or mostly, complete for this, and so it's really to recoup some of those expenses. As far as construction's concerned, it's still likely a couple years out. This is a project that takes many years. There's this, when you're dealing with water rights, and how water physically moves from point A to point B, there's just cooperation with ditch owners and state agencies and this. So that's kind of the status of things. But yeah, we will schedule the second reading for January 21st, if this is approved tonight.
Questions for David? It's pretty straightforward.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve first reading of ordinance 2024-20, with a second and final reading scheduled for January 21st, 2025.
Second.
So we have a motion from Councilmember Martin, seconded by Councilmember Pappenforth, and the motion is to approve the first reading of ordinance 2024-20, with a second and final reading scheduled for January 21st, 2025. Further discussion?
Nakorato?
Yes.
Fontana?
Yes.
Pappenforth?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Cretelli?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Motion passed.
And we have ordinance 2024-21, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Salida, Colorado, adopting by reference the 2024 addition of the Model Traffic Code, providing penalties for the violations thereof, and making conforming amendments to the City of Salida Municipal Code, repealing all ordinances in conflict therewith, and providing penalties for violation thereof. This is a first reading and setting a second reading in public hearing for January 7th, 2025. Thanks.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just real quick, if I could, thank the community for the shop, the cop support. We had a great event last Sunday. A lot of kids had a lot of fun, and we appreciate the community's support on that. Moving on to the ordinance, 24-21, this is an adoption of the Model Traffic Code, a pretty standard procedure. We do it every time there's significant stuff that's changed. There was an update in 2014, and then again in 2020, that wasn't really significant, so we didn't adopt that. 2024, we have some new stuff that deals with child seats, juvenile seat belts, cell phone usage, low-powered scooters. So we wanted to get that language into the municipal code. With that, in Section 1203, in the actual Model Traffic Code, it's referencing ski signs, ski... it's referencing ski signs, ski area signs. We have no ski areas in Salida, so we're going to amend that to be 1203 parking, which we have had as parking for the last 20 years. That'll allow us not to change all of our software and update everything in the computer system by just changing that language. We did add in a section on that to state where there's downtown three-hour parking limits. Actually, I got to talk about that, too. Changing the two-hour parking to the requested three hours that came in from council after the study we did this summer. And then with that, changing the three-hour parking limit areas downtown during snow events to no parking for 48 hours after the snow stops, from 4:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m., to allow for Public Works to get the snow out of the road. And that would not be a hard-to situation. It would be a fine on the vehicle, and we would attempt to contact them, obviously. Other than that, that covers the majority of the changes. We're just looking for an adoption on that.
Questions for Chief?
So that time-limited parking turning to no parking during a snow event, that's kind of like, those are just like placed in a way that snow removal can just be done better with like less cars in those areas?
Yeah, it gives us, the downtown area specifically, where we have all the businesses, cars are parked there quite often for long periods of times, and Public Works can't get in there to clean the snow. So we get all the buildup of ice, and then it gets kind of like frozen, then it thalls during the day, then it refreezes. This would give them time between 4:00 a.m. and 11:00 a.m., and we'd sign it, and it would say no parking, so the citizens would know. And then anybody that's parked there, we would contact and move so they can finish the snow removal.
And I noticed the other day, after one of those big snow events, they had the signs in the middle of the street so that people would know they couldn't park during those times. You could see with the Public Works crews, we were working really hard to get everything cleared, how much of a challenge it would be if they had to try to navigate between all these parked cars. So I think this is...
Yeah, and we kind of unofficially do it now where we put cones in the street and tell people, hey, can you move your vehicle? This would make it official to where during those times, it would give us some authority to say, hey, you need to move your car so we can get the snow out of there, just for the safety of the community.
Are you still going to use the cones and signage to let people know?
No, we'll actually have posted signs down there.
Okay.
Permanent. And then all the two-hour signs will be reposted with three hours. Any other questions?
Or a motion?
I don't think we need to amend that it says Fort Morgan because we've already discussed that in the consent agenda.
Yeah. And this is a correct one. You notice here it says...
Yeah, we've corrected it on that one.
Okay. So I move to approve Ordinance 2024-21 on first reading and set the second reading in public hearing for January 7th, 2025.
Second.
So we have a motion from Councilmember Pappanfort, and I was looking this way, so who was it? Okay, I have a, thank you, a second from Councilmember Martin. The motion is to approve Ordinance 2024-21 on first reading and set the second reading in public hearing for January 7th, 2025. Further discussion?
Fontana?
Yes.
Nakarato?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Cretelli?
Yes.
Pappanfort?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, and then we have Ordinance 2024-22, An Ordinance of the City Council for the City of Salida, Colorado, Approving the Angel View Major Impact Review for a Plan Development Overlay in Major Subdivision. This is a first reading and setting a second reading in public hearing for January 7th, 2025. Thanks.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm happy to be here to present the Angel View Plan Development and Major Subdivision for the first reading of Ordinance 2024-22. Next slide. The applicant is Walt Harder of Harder Diesel and Holdings LLC, along with representation by Ronnie Paluso of Palona Architects. They are available online this evening if anyone has questions, requesting a major impact review approval for a plan development overlay in major subdivision of the remaining properties within the Angel View Minor Subdivision. Land Use Code Section 163120 allows for concurrent review of the applications, and the property is located between Airport Road and Poncha Boulevard west of Holman. The applicant is proposing a major subdivision and plan development overlay of the 11.9 acre site. The proposal is for 22 residential lots comprised of 19 single-family, 18 duplex, two-town home, and three multiple-family lots, plus a public park, and five HOA-maintained community open space lots, which include pedestrian walkways, as well as three outlots that include stormwater detention areas. There's a total of 115 units proposed. In addition, Shepherd Road will be realigned and replatted and constructed by the developer. Both roads include eight-foot-wide shared-use paths on one side within the public right-of-way. A park dedication less than the 2.3 acre requirement for the 115 residential units is considered acceptable here due to the anticipated dedication of parkland on the adjacent property where the Salida Farms, Quality Farms annexation is, as well as the provision of several of the community open space areas in the pedestrian connections. And I will go into more of the conditions regarding the park development later in the presentation. In spite of numerous angles that have affected the proposal, the correct title is Angel View Neighborhood Plan Development. So that will be listed on the PD plan. On the PD plan here, the maroon buildings are apartments. The orange are duplexes and townhomes, and the light yellow are the single-family. The next slide. Applications for the major impact review follow a multi-step process. The Planning Commission did hold their public hearing on February 26th of 2024. Both the major subdivision and plan development overlay were unanimously recommended for approval with conditions. The Planning Commission minutes are included in your packet, and I will go over the proposed revisions to the commission's recommendations. They have been updated because the plans were updated, and so some of the conditions regarding notes on the plats and things were no longer needed because they were updated. The second reading in public hearing for this is Tuesday, January 7th. The details of the request. A plan development is a zoning district overlay which allows flexibility in the underlying zoning district standards to permit the application of more innovative site planning and design concepts that might not be possible under the strict use of the Zone District standards. The comprehensive plan future land use map shows the Angel View property as higher efficiency residential. And that map is the next slide. The proposed plan development is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan in that it lies within the municipal services area. It provides a mixture of housing types and has satisfied the inclusionary housing requirement. And that was via a credit that was passed with the Confluence Subdivision Project under Ordinance 2020-01. Next slide. There are six proposed deviations to the dimensional standards of the Zone District, and this includes reduction in the minimum size, the minimum lot size for both attached and detached units, which reflect the IH standards that would otherwise apply. A 5% reduction to the minimum landscape area, an eight-foot reduction to the front setback, along with clarification of conditions recommended by the Planning Commission. This shall also apply to the front porches. That was requested by Planning Commission. A 10% increase in the maximum lot coverage from 45% to 55%, and the density increase that was allowed under Resolution 2020-30 for the 11.9 acre property would allow 246 units total, but the proposal is for 115 units total. Additionally, the next slide, please. An exception to the lot frontage requirement for two lots that abut a stormwater outlot is requested. Those lots will have public street access via 30-foot access easement, and they will also have sidewalks, so they're not really missing any of the actual needs of frontage access. And then under the architecture standards, the applicant has requested a modification that essentially exempts the multiple-family buildings from the limitations of the repetition on facades and allows for administrative review of exceptions. So in the PD standards, there's a lengthy section on architecture shall not mirror the building next to it, and can only be repeated every five or such. And because the multifamily buildings are kind of monolithic, they don't have a lot of variety, so to speak, so they're asking for an exception just for those buildings. The applicant has also proposed conditions beyond code requirements for the primary roof form diversity, and that was an intent to provide more of the historic character of Salida. And it states that a mix of gabled, mono-pitch, and flat-roofed building forms are permitted in the neighborhood, while modern in character, the architectural precedent for the neighborhood relies on early 1900 pitched roof forms. To maintain consistency in the overall architectural style, no single-family duplex building or townhome may exhibit mono-pitch or flat roofs as their primary roof form for more than once every five lots on the same side of the street. And there's an exception for street corners. So that is intended to give a little more variety in the shape. And in terms of the trails, the plan development evaluation criteria states that reasonable efforts must be made to connect to nearby recreational areas, parks, open space, and provide green corridors that connect to other urbanized areas. And any trails included in the city's comprehensive plan or park's master plan should be incorporated. So the proposal does include, as I mentioned, eight-foot-wide shared-use paths along Tenderfoot and Shepherd Road. And due to also the grading along County Road 120, that existing asphalt path will be rebuilt with a curb and gutter and an eight-foot concrete path. And that is because of the development pushing that edge a little bit. So the developer's just going to go ahead and rebuild that to current city standards. There will also be five-foot-wide sidewalks throughout the rest of the development, you know, in front of all the other units. There are two mid-block crossings that have bumpouts. One is in the middle of Tenderfoot, and the other one is in the middle of Shepherd, proposed. The one in the middle of Shepherd would connect directly to the park. The one in Tenderfoot would kind of provide access to the Angel View Apartments that are existing through the development, and then to the multifamily area. And that, originally, the applicant wanted, I think, a total of five, sort of a mixture, and Planning Commission sort of felt like, well, that's a good thing, and they had it in their conditions to allow for that. However, in negotiating with or talking with Public Works, because of Public Works standards and because of the fact that many of those parking spaces would be lost on the street if you had several more crossings, the applicant agreed that just the two bumpouts are sufficient. And then the sidewalks and other internal walkways and whatnot would provide the additional connectivity. So they were satisfied with the Public Works requirement. And the next slide, it illustrates the context of the development with the pathways in the city. And you can see right in the middle of the main pathways on Airport and on Poncha. And then there's plans for potentially a future connection along the golf course up to the hospital trail and whatnot. So it'll be a nice set of connectivity for this area. Also here, this just shows you, the thicker green arrows are the shared-use paths. The smaller green double arrows are the internal HOA walkways that will be maintained by the HOA. And the other two are the mid-block bumpouts to the park and in between the sections of the development. Next slide. So the HOA will maintain the interior walkways and outlots. Public street and infrastructure will be dedicated to the city as well as the public park, and a subdivision improvement agreement will be brought to council for approval early next year. Next slide. As previously mentioned, the density bonus of 2,100 square foot per unit would allow for a maximum of 246 units. However, only 115 are proposed. And in terms of the subdivision, this is being reviewed concurrently. The subdivision standards are similar, but they relate more to the actual plating of the lots. The next slide. Just to illustrate, this is the applicant's 3D illustration of the proposed development, where you can sort of see the variety of housing types. Generally speaking, the gray roofs are the multifamily buildings. There's three sections of multifamily buildings. And the other buildings are the mixture of single-family, duplex, and townhomes. And then the next slide. The proposal meets all other criteria of the design standards of the municipal code, and civil drawings have been preliminarily approved by Public Works to be finalized with the SIA. Next slide. The traffic study submitted by the applicant has been approved by Public Works. The applicant could elaborate further on the traffic impacts as to what percentage of an increase this would result in traffic on Poncha and on Airport Road. There were several comments concerning traffic and the adequacy of access between the existing Angel View condominiums and the proposed homes on Tenderfoot. So in the public hearing in January, you might hear public comment regarding that and to be taken under consideration. The next slide. These are the requested deviations to the development standards, as I've already gone over. This illustration that's provided on that slide kind of gives you a sense of how much coverage there would be if there was also an ADU. So it is a very compact development, and there will be a lot of buildings. But the landscaping requirement has been reduced just by 5%. So, and the maximum parking area coverage has not changed. So it's just a more intense development, which meets the goals of the city to provide more density and more affordable housing. The next slide. Other criteria call for energy-efficient design, a variety of housing options, as I've explained, and mitigation of fiscal impacts. And that will be accomplished with the system development fees and fees and looms for schools, as well as the park development. The next slide. The proposal includes a higher level of amenities with the construction of the park improvements and additional provisions for pedestrian access, as I mentioned. The requested deviations, again, allow for more compact development and are compatible with the city's goals. The proposed housing types fit the R3 Zone District intent and are similar to other R3 developments. You will also hear that, probably in public comment, that the architecture is not compatible with the surroundings, but the county developments are very different. They're very low-density and a different style here. So it's like a little bit of apples and oranges there. But in terms of city goals, the development meets the city goals.
We got a little of that with Upchurch.
Yeah, it's hard, you know, what can you do? It's the nature of our area, especially as we push to the west. There are two primary phases proposed, and will be additional construction phasing delineated in the SIA. Four apartments that have already been completed in Phase 1 up near Airport Road were permitted by right prior to the plan development. So that's why those buildings are already there. And they're near, excuse me, they're nearing completion. Okay. The park and open space requirement... The park and open space requirement is proposed to be satisfied with the dedication and construction of roughly one acre of park area. That includes the .72 acre plus the .29 acre of an easement next to the park, directly next to the park. The fee-in- lieu calculation would be for $322,000. And on the next slide, a park concept plan has been provided, and this includes an accessible place structure with safety surfacing, two benches, a picnic pavilion, open turf grass area, and connecting pathways. The reason this came about is because the Parks Director has provided specifications now for the construction of a type of park of this size. This is what he's included as a park definition in the standards, which we didn't have before. And although the code says dedicate and develop, we never really had what that meant. And so, we were kind of left with, well, we'll take the land and get to it later. In this case, I will be honest, having been a park planner for 30 years, I didn't want to see that happen, and Jezel worked very hard to come up with those standards. And so, we negotiated with the developer and said, will you build the park to meet these standards as a pocket park with all of those amenities and do it all, and we'll have all of those specifications in the SIA? And we've done a preliminary cost estimate of roughly $250,000 that would be deducted from the fee-in- lieu of $322,000, leaving about $75,000 for park improvements elsewhere in the city. We felt this was the best option, because it would get the park built and done and completed prior to the entire subdivision being completed, so we'll probably time it, say, after about 25% of the certificates of occupancy are given, then the park needs to have been completed by then. So, I think it was a good negotiation process for this park. There are no other civic structures proposed, but there are some small additional private open spaces that will be maintained by the HOA. The major subdivision plat is the survey document that legally describes and illustrates the division of land into lots, easements, rights-of-way, et cetera. So, there's similar standards, but it's a different set of documents. In terms of natural features, this area was identified by the county as low habitat, but staff would like to recommend that pollinator-friendly landscaping and restrictions on the use of chemicals perhaps be addressed in maybe the CCNRs. This is not a city requirement, per se, but it's, we'd just like to see that kind of thing in a nice development like this, perhaps. The property is not located within a 100-year floodplain or adjacent to any highway where mitigation would be required. The lot, block, and street layout is acceptable to our Public Works Department. And the next slide. The architectural elements were described earlier and also are included as part of the recommended conditions and are noted on the PD plan. The next slide. This illustrates, again, there's the duplexes, townhomes, and apartments, where you can see the apartments have more of a flat facade and flat roofs, but there's more articulation in the other buildings, the single-family and two-family. Next slide. As previously mentioned, the inclusionary housing requirements have been satisfied for the development, and that was in the terms of ordinance 2020-01. And the development will comply with all other facets of the municipal code.
Real quickly, just so people understand that who weren't on council back then, there was a negotiation, and what it allowed is, in return for the 48-unit Salida Ridge Low-Income Tax Credit Project, it was part of the negotiation. So, we got a lot of units in another part of town in return for this, so I just wanted everyone to be aware of that.
Yeah, exactly. And that's in the packet, all that excerpt from the Confluent Park Plan Development. Okay, next slide. In terms of the review agency comments, the Fire Department has approved the seventeen-and-a-half-foot public, excuse me, it's a private access between the apartments and the new subdivision that is a private alley, but they felt like it would be sufficient for fire access, although 20 feet is usually what is preferred. The Police Department had no issues with the proposal. The Parks Department expressed support for the revised calculations in the park concept. The Public Works Department supports, as I mentioned, the two bumpouts. There's also bumpouts at the intersection, so it'll make crossing easier at all of the street intersections. So, they were supportive of all of that. And as I mentioned, each bumpout is approximately 60 feet and long, and eliminates about six on-street parking stalls, so that's why we limited it to just the two. Additional comments, the civil plans have been preliminary approved, as I mentioned. The Finance Department indicated that system development fees will be paid, and the fair contributions to public schools note is included on the plat. Excel Energy approved of the layout of the easements. And we did work with Chaffey County regarding the realignment of Shepherd Road, so right now it exists and is technically owned by the city, but it's being replatted and realigned slightly with the development, and no other comments have been received to date. So, with that, in your packet, I have the full text of the conditions recommended by Planning Commission, and I provided strikeouts, so you can see how they were changed. And as I mentioned, it really had, those strikeouts are really due to the fact that the plans have been updated and included all of those notes that were requested. The two conditions that we do recommend have to do with the park and just the notation that a future SIA will be included. So, I'll read the conditions into the record. The public park, Park 1, shall be constructed by the developer in accordance with the park concept plan as specified in a subdivision improvement agreement, which shall delineate all products, materials, details, and specifications in a cost estimate approved by the city. The agreed-upon cost of construction of the park shall be deducted from the required park and open space fee-in- lieu of $322,000. Any remaining balance shall be paid to the city for use in future park development as determined by the Director of Parks and Recreation. The public park and all park improvements shall be dedicated to the city. And the second condition is, prior to recordation of the subdivision plat, the developer shall enter into a subdivision improvement agreement that guarantees the construction of all public improvements required for the project. The SIA shall include a phasing plan delineating the sequential installation of public improvements. Issuance of residential building permits shall be subject to completion of required public improvements in accordance with the approved SIA phasing plan. And the architectural conditions regarding streetscape diversity and primary roof forms are also included on the plan, and they're included in the ordinance. So, with that, the motion would be to approve ordinance 2024-22 on first reading and set the public hearing date for January 7, 2025.
Questions after that? Very comprehensive presentation.
Thank you.
Good job, Carolyn.
Yes.
So, I have a question. I'm not sure how to ask it, but how, can you clarify how the existing Angel View buildings fit in with this PD?
So, the existing condominiums are not part of the PD. That was, so the original subdivision was Angel View Minor Subdivision, and they sort of sectioned off that, I think, those lots just for the condominiums, and those were completed. And then, by right, they were allowed to apply to start building additional buildings, because it meant the density and setbacks and whatnot. And so, those were the apartment buildings that started getting built. I think their intent all along was to do a PD, but it was one of those things where some more discussion needed to happen and really had to come to a realization that in order to benefit from the deviations and things like that, that they wanted to provide for a denser development, they really needed the PD. So, then, the PD application moved forward, and it was brought in initially in February, early this year, and it sort of got on hold because there were some issues going back and forth. So, it's taken a while, but it kind of got taken off the back burner and said, let's just get this done, you know? We don't want this to drag on. And part of it was, the park, frankly, was a bone of contention. So, by getting that settled and agreeing to the deviations that were requested and settling where the bumpouts can be and things like that, then it was able to bring this forward.
Could you go to the previous slide? I'm mostly, the reason for my question is, sorry, I was looking for the one before that talks about the architectural, the facade diversity.
Yeah, for the condos that didn't apply, because that wasn't a planned development.
Gotcha. Okay, and so, that's my concern.
Yeah. They won't look like that.
I think one of the issues with the condos is the landscaping and the lack of landscaping, like, the trees look really great in the renderings, but I don't know that trees like that can exist out there. It's really windy and dry.
Yeah, it's definitely difficult. I have a little heartburn with the fact that we allow stone mulch everywhere, and the mulch counts as landscaping. So, we're working, especially in the new code, to delineate that a little bit better in our administrative manual, so that we get more xeriscaping that is greenery and is more appropriate to this climate that will survive. And I think I'll work with them, too, on their landscaping if needed. It's not really my role after this, but, you know, I'm a landscaper architect, so what can I say?
Right. Yeah, I always have like that issue, too, of you can encourage, like, you wanted to encourage pollinators, right? But with an HOA governing it, what is their, you know, what's forcing their hand to?
Right. Well, they, like I said, it's not a city standard right now to say that, but when you have an HOA formed in a nice development like this, and I think it is a nice development, they're going to want to see it looking good. And so, the landscaping they do have, I think they're going to want to be high-quality. And so, if they would themselves put in some requirements in their CCNRs regarding some landscaping standards, then the HOA could enforce that. We wouldn't, because it's not in the code currently, but that's one avenue for them to, we can't force them to put anything in the CCNRs, but...
Like, fingers crossed.
Yeah, exactly.
So, I was just, I had a couple of questions about the infrastructure. Does it tie into the existing Angel View that's already there? Or there'll be, I don't know, is there anything on County Road 120 where new taps will be put in on 120, or does it all stem from, I guess?
Well, there'd be a water main loop system that has to go through this subdivision, probably loops around and comes out. I'm not sure where the exact main location, our, you know, director lady might be able to, but the individual lots will have their taps in accordance with standard Public Works standards and things.
Any other questions? And I would just remind everyone that, I mean, this is just a first reading, and obviously it's going to be at the public hearing, that the public will get to weigh in, and we'll have a lot of transparency around this process, so just wanted to...
Because I will say, I also appreciate the work with the park. I've never seen a process like that presented before, so...
Negotiating with Walt Harder was interesting. We did it.
As John's laughing in the background.
He's online. That's great. I love Walt. We're BFFs now, so...
Mr. Mayor, I'm moving to approve ordinance 2024-22 on first reading and set the second reading and public hearing for January 7, 2025.
Yes.
Second. So, we have a motion from Councilmember Pappanfort, seconded by Councilmember Martin. The motion is to approve ordinance 2024-22 on first reading and set the second reading and public hearing for January 7, 2025. Further discussion?
Nakarado?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Pappanfort?
Yes.
Fontana?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Cretelli?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, and that brings us to council reports. Councilmember Cretelli, you're on the spot.
My gosh, it's been another year? Yeah, I guess, see y'all in 2025. See you next year, and happy holidays. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Fontana?
I don't have much to report this time. I would like to make sure that when the review of the fees for the Arts and Culture Department or those reviews that we have not seen yet, when those come forward, I would like to make sure that that is brought to council again, so that we can make an amendment to increase the fees in the fee schedule, if that's possible. I'm not sure if that's how that works, Christie, but I would like to make sure that that is brought towards up again when those fees are reevaluated.
Absolutely. Yes, it will be brought to council.
Thank you, and that is all I have to report, and Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays.
Thank you. Councilmember Nakarado?
Nothing tonight. Happy holidays, everybody.
Thank you. Councilmember Martin?
I wanted to give a shout-out to our fourth graders at Longfellow Elementary, to the fourth graders and the teachers. They actually have the highest math scores out of all 1,100 schools in Colorado.
Wow.
So, shout-out to them.
Nice.
I also want to say thank you to Catherine Dunlevy. I read that she is going to be departing from the city, and I just hope she enjoys the travels with her husband. That is in the report. Shout-out to the Mountain Mail. I appreciated their section. I read recently, just clarifying that the letters to the editor are opinions, and they are not fact-checked. And I would assume, you know, the opinion section, people know that, but I think it's a really good reminder, they are not fact-checked. And the last thing for tonight, I would like to request to place a temporary moratorium on the establishment of natural medicine businesses in Salida in the amount of six months, so that we have our city attorneys to give us some time to create policies and standards surrounding those businesses.
And I support that.
I support that, too.
We'll be happy to draft that up.
It's an all-medicine-from-nature.
Psilocybin, mushrooms is...
Plant.
Does our lawyer have, is that what it is, psilocybin?
As far as I know. Yeah, and we're having to draft these moratoria for a number of the jurisdictions that we represent, so we'll be happy to do that, six months.
Okay, cool. I'm supportive of that.
Councilmember Pappanfort?
I get to attend an online training for newly-elected city council members, and people think that's silly, since I'm in my second term, but it was the first time it had been offered in years, and it was really a fantastic training. So, you know, anybody who wants me to share that with them, just let me know, and I'll afford the stuff to you. A lot of it was things that we've run before. The purpose of local government and your role was awesome, open meetings and how to run a meeting, we've heard that again and again, the public official liability, ethics and conflicts of interest, how clerks can be a resource. That was really good stuff. Default empathy. This was really the highlight of the training for me. Embarking on public service with self-awareness and humility. And then, it was about collaboration and team-building, and so, the staff at CML just did a fantastic job. And thank you, Christie, for getting me out of going to Denver, because it was much better to do it in my living room. And happy holidays, everyone.
Thanks. Councilmember Stevens?
You know, it's crazy, it's already been a year since the new members here have been on council. Kind of seems like it's flown by. Kind of seems like it's flown by a little bit. So, you know, as you said, it's been educational, you know, challenging. It's been comical at some points. So like I said, you're always learning something. I've got lots, I've already learned a lot and lots more to learn, and looking forward to the next, you know, three years of my term. And thanks to staff and everybody for, you know, pushing us through it, helping us figure it all out. And other than that, yeah. Merry Christmas.
Thank you. I just had a few things tonight. First off, I had a chance, this was about a week and a half or two ago, they opened the Bike Skills Park down under Tenderfoot, and I just, it was an amazing event, lots of energy. I love to see the collaboration between Parks and Rec and Salida Mountain Trails, just a great example of how collaboration works. And to see so many people there, really excited to check it out, so kudos for that. Secondly, last, on Saturday, I had a chance to go to the Wreaths Across America at Fairview Cemetery. And for those of you who aren't familiar with it, I mean, I would encourage any and everyone in this community to go. I mean, it's an opportunity to honor our veterans that are buried in the cemetery. And there was an opportunity where you lay the wreath in front of the gravestone and have an opportunity, a moment of silence, to thank them for their service, their sacrifice, really powerful. And I mean, these are people that fought and died for our freedoms, and we take so many of them for granted, it's just a good reminder. So every December, that was the second thing. Yesterday, I believe it was, I went to the groundbreaking for the Montessori School and really exciting to see them beginning there and all the work in the community and what it's going to mean to our youth. So that was the third thing. And the final thing on a more somber and, I mean, I'm appalled about this hate crime that we had recently in this community. We need to up our game, we need to be better than that. There can be zero tolerance, and I want to thank the police for their quick response. I'm really grateful that we have a new district attorney in place that I really hope throws the book at this individual because completely unacceptable. I am just dumbfounded that something like that could happen in this community. And I had heard perhaps that the person who was a subject of this would have moved, and I hope that's not the case. This community supports you, and please feel free to reach out to me, but we want you here, and so sorry that you had to endure and experience this. And other than that, I just wanted to wish everybody a very, very happy holiday. Thank you. Anything, I think the treasurer has some good news tonight.
I do. Mr. Mayor, I wanted to give a shout out to our award-winning Finance Department. The Government Finance Officers Association notified us that the city's annual 2023 Comprehensive Financial Report is awarded the prestigious Excellence in Finance Reporting Award for the third year in a row. That's a great tenure of our finance team and goes to show all the great work that they do. Also, I want to quickly give the sales tax update. The October city sales tax collections increased by about $76,000 or about 10.1% as compared to October of 2023. The city's portion of the Chaffey County sales tax collections increased by about $10,000, which is a 3.7% increase over October of 2023. In total, sales tax receipts are 8.3% higher for October and 3.8% higher year to date. And I'm also happy to report that we are showing a favorable balance in the general fund. That's the end of my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. How about our esteemed attorney?
Merry Christmas, everybody.
Thank you. Anything for staff?
Yes, I just want to remind you all that it's not the holiday season unless you come downtown and see a big heart fall from a fire truck on F Street. We'll have two heart drops, one at nine and one at midnight, first time we're doing this, so we're hoping it's successful, so please come down and join us to kick off 2025.
Thank you. And all that remains would be a motion to adjourn.
A move we adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Happy holidays, everybody.